Good afternoon. I'd like to call this budget work session to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it's May 12th, 2014. I didn't say that. Could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Francisco Hart.
President.
Hodgkiss.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Do we have any public comment items not on the agenda?
No, we don't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So we'll move right on. It looks like we're going to the Fire Department first. Chief McElroy.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we're here today to present our budget for fiscal year 15. It's the second year of a two-year budget for us. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ron Lickdie, who will go through the numbers with you, and then we'll be available for clarifications and any other questions you might have later. Ron?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good afternoon. I'm Ron Lickdie, Administration Services Manager for the Fire Department, and I'm here to talk about our fiscal year 15 recommended budget. So here's a presentation outline what we'll be covering today. We'll be looking at the Fire Department overall, an overview of the generally of the Fire Department, and then looking primarily at the changes to the 2015 plan from what was adopted last year for it. Then we'll look at a couple of fee changes, and then some key initiatives and performance objectives and capital outlay that we're working with. So to begin with, our department overview. The Fire Department has 105 employees, the same number as last year, and that's how we have nine managers and ninety members in our bargaining unit, our association, and six general employees. And the department is split up into three main divisions: administration, then operations, and the prevention department, division. And then an organizational chart to give you an idea of who reports to who. Everybody's under the fire chief, and then he's got the Division for Operations on the left and Prevention on the right. And under Prevention, the fire marshal has the Emergency Services Manager and his Fire Prevention Bureau and inspectors. And under the Operations Division Chief, he's got three battalions, that's our shifts, and also our training, our new training division. And there's also a small section for the Administrative Services Manager and staff for the office. Overall, for all of our funds for the Fire Department, we're requesting a $23.9 million budget. And the vast majority of that, you can see, 96 percent, is the general fund. And then we have a couple of other funds, our Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District Fund, and also capital outlay and equipment replacement funds round out the total. So now we'll take a look quickly at the general fund. And the general fund's budget is $22.9 million this year. And again, the majority of that operation is this is our seven programs within the Fire Department. And our operations, that's the fire trucks and medical responses that everyone's familiar with. And then we also segregate a portion for airport rescue and firefighting, that's our station over at the airport. We have our Prevention Bureau, administration, training recruitment, emergency services, and then our wildland. So let's take a look at the changes to the general fund, to all of our budgets that we're proposing. And first, we'll start with the general fund. This is our expenditures for the general fund. And overall, we're actually reducing the recommended budget for fiscal year 215 from the original plan by about $128,000. And that's a combination of different factors, which we'll go into shortly here. But you can see there's a decrease to salaries and benefits in that third column, the grayed-out column, an increase in allocated costs and a decrease in equipment. So what makes up those changes? The majority of the changes are citywide enhancements and budgetary changes that are instated globally by the finest department for our budget. And so there was a decrease to our PERS rates as opposed to what was originally forecast by $107,000. Our workers' compensation allocation, also information systems, and our vehicle replacement fund also had slight increases from what was adopted a year ago. And there's a $60,000 contribution to the closed public safety pension fund because it needs some funding. So those are the citywide changes to the budget. And then the Fire Department also had a couple of changes that we initiated to the general fund, and that's these couple. Go ahead, Chief.
Madam Mayor, council, one of the things that we looked at in our, in the first year of the two-year budget, we were planning on hiring again starting this fall. And we've been going through so many people over the past few years that we anticipated doing the same. What we found is our demographic change has really started to slow down. So we're not seeing the numbers that would cause us to feel like we have to do some hiring, which we would have started a few months from now and then have an academy in the winter first quarter of 2015. So we postponed that, and that's a significant cost for us. And we'd like to think we'll push it into January of 2016 in terms of starting an academy, but we're starting to get a little idea that maybe it might be a little earlier than that and maybe in the last quarter of 2015. But we're just going to see how that goes. It doesn't make sense for us to run an academy for anything less than five or six people, and six is what we'd like to see as a minimum.
Mr. Hodgkiss has a question.
Chief, are we losing people because they're transferring out to other departments or retiring primarily?
No, it was just, it was retirement. We're not losing people to other departments. That was a problem 20 years ago, 25 years ago, but that's just not, that's not the case anymore. When we, when we get people, we're keeping them.
Okay, so we're entirely competitive, then?
Yeah, we're very competitive. The...
And Mr. White also has a follow-up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The police will use other academies from time to time. Does the Fire Department do the same?
No, we, Councilmember White, no, we hire, we run our own academies, but as Chief Bryden just pointed out to me, which I should have mentioned to you earlier, the last couple years, because of the amount of people that we were losing and the amount of experience involved, we, our last two academies were laterals. So we hired people that in some years had as many as 10 years' experience on another department and brought them here. And so that allowed us to run a shorter academy and capture a lot of experience. But now I think we're going to be looking at hiring, you know, more from inside the community, and people with less experience would probably be our next academy.
Okay, thank you.
And another thing we are in process of doing right now, we bought a Type III engine last year and actually started it about two years ago. And we're looking at something, we're working with Fleet, and Mr. Armstrong's aware of this, for this year, we're going to be keeping an extra reserve Type I pumper that might have gone away when we've got, when we received our last engine. So we're going to be keeping that this year. We're expecting a possibly very heavy fire season, and so we're looking at our fleet and overall, looking for the type of fleet that we want to have, not right now necessarily, but 10, 15, 20 years from now. And so we're doing a comprehensive look at that right now, and Chief Bryden's kind of running that. So for this year, that's an additional cost that we'll be paying. And we are looking, like I said, we are looking at fire training and recruitment, but there's not a cost attached to that right now. We're, we're looking at the local academies, who's coming around, who's in the community. And so we're looking to find our next group of firefighters from there.
Chief, if I might, how does the profile of the equipment we need change? Do you see, is there a different way of fighting fires, this is a way of combating wildfires?
Well, Councilmember Hodgkiss, primarily wildfire. What we're looking for is, we bought a new Type III engine. There's a number of other type of apparatus that are out there that we think it's a good time for us to look at and decide where we want to go in the future, because if we want it five years from now, we should be planning for it now, and that's what we're trying to do.
We had a new engine that was supposed to facilitate firefighting in the hills last year, but it had some malfunctions. Did those get fixed?
It's up at Station 7 right now.
It's working?
It's at Station 7 right now, and we have another one that, the one that that's replacing is now at Station 4. So the two primary responses into the wildland urban interface both have Type III engines now.
All right, and go back to something I should have asked before. When you mentioned an academy down the line, we looking at like five people early next year, you think?
Like I said, six is what we, six is what I like to think is an ideal number, kind of the floor.
Thank you.
Okay, continue on then. So we just looked at the expenditure side of the general fund's changes, and now there's a couple of changes to our revenues as well. We're increasing revenues by $76,000 from the original plan. You can see the $53,000 increase in airport reimbursement. That is a, and again, a financed, calculated allocation and adjustment based on global changes to rates and increases to general salaries. And mutual aid, this is, we're increasing our estimated mutual aid revenue, again, to pay for that extra reserve engine that we were just talking about.
Mr. Hart has a question.
I noticed the mutual aid number going down significantly from FY '14 to '15. Can you tell me about that?
Yeah, certainly. Councilmember Hart, the mutual aid number in projected fiscal year 14, that's actual billings and revenues that we're receiving. Now, that's based, we estimate we're going to bill out for $400,000 for the current year, for the coming year. But we don't want to estimate and build into a budget a million dollars and then come short of that. So we estimate low, conservatively, and then if we bring in more, it's just more work and...
Oh, I see. So that's based on a response to an incident?
Yes, to all, for mutual aid incidents that we're called to provide resources.
And they also budget low on the expense side, too. So it's, the revenue's on one side, then, and then the actual overtime for the guys to go out on the mutual aid is also budgeted low. So if we, if we are called for a million dollars for the mutual aid, we'll come mid-year, and we'll boost the revenues and boost the expenditure appropriations on both sides.
Okay, good, thank you.
It's maybe awful to say, but when we do mutual aid, we actually make money on this, Secretary.
There is overhead this year. As a matter of fact, we're expecting, at this point, estimating almost $200,000 to the good.
Difference?
Yes. So that winds up the general fund changes. And then one of our other funds is our Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment Fund. And there are a couple of changes. This shows both revenues and expenditures on the same slide. You can see the revenues are going up by a small amount of $2,200. That's a small increase per parcel for, that's assessed on homes in the assessment district. And the expenditures are gone up significantly. We're adding $71,000, almost $72,000 to our expenditures, and this is monies, reserves that we had not spent in the previous two years, and we're ramping up more projects, more road cleaners, more vegetation, defense space projects, and we want to use those monies to provide the best service we can. And then we have two final funds. We have major equipment replacement fund that we're just starting with a seed money of $13,000. This $13,000 is coming basically from that mutual aid revenues that we have earned this year, that's over our expenses. So we want to start storing some money, and we've come up with a replacement plan for our major equipment. We're coming up with that to start budgeting for and preparing for large, major equipment purchases in the future. So this is money to start saving, we're trying to figure out exactly how much do we need per year, and then this is the money that will be funding that annual payment or need for the, for the, for the new equipment. So we're starting that with just $13,000, and that's what the $13,000 for equipment is as well. The other change to our capital outlay fund is $240,000 for a new live burn training system, and that's funded by 120, we're expecting $120,000 in grants, and then using $120,000 of our capital reserves to fund this training system. And we'll talk, we have more slides on that training system coming up.
Mr. Hart?
So the $13,000 is the first time that you've contributed to that capital fund?
That's correct.
And so this is just a starting place to that. But that number likely will grow pretty significantly.
It has to.
If you're going to do this in a self-contained way, is that the plan ultimately? Is the department's going to feed that general fund pot?
Mayor Senator, Councilmember Hart, that's exactly what it is. What we're trying to do is reflect the same type of planning that goes into funding our fire engines. And so we look at the life of the equipment and start putting seed money in there, because as it is now, we come to you from the capital, capital projects. And we think if we can find a way to do that, it'll free up more money in the capital projects. And to that end, that $462,000 for self-contained breathing apparatus, just before I came over here, we called Washington because we have a grant in process, and I was hoping to have some good news today, but it just hasn't gone through yet. So if we get funding for that, that will go out of capital, it'll come out of the capital improvement fund.
Okay, good, thank you.
So we're pursuing grants and trying to build our own savings account for our key equipment.
But it's just going to take time, and I'm sure Mr. Armstrong wants to jump in.
Yeah, just if you look at that self-contained breathing apparatus item, there's a, that's a $460,000 item, and the department also has turnout gear that needs to be replaced, you know, periodically. And when we did the sum total of what, and, you know, this is outside their vehicles, you know, what do they really need to spend every year? It's probably $150,000. And so, you know, we're funding the self-contained breathing apparatus out of the capital fund. We're also funding that, the other capital reserve out of the general fund, but we decided, let's set it up, and then, you know, next year of the two-year budget, start funding it. And also, when they do have, you know, they do better on the mutual aid, here's a place we'd probably come mid-year and say, let's transfer some money in there to help prime that pump.
Good plan. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to ask these questions at the end about the vehicles, but I could picture a spreadsheet that has all of this stuff, and its age, and its cost, and its projected cost, and all that kind of stuff. And the conversation that I was headed towards, which isn't new, is on the vehicles, and with their obvious 25-year life or 15 to 25-year life, and their crazy change of costs and all that kind of stuff. So I'm looking, I'm always looking for a stronger presentation on that, because I think it's something that is useful for us, as well as for our citizens, to see that big, the bigger picture there of cost and the range of equipment. I appreciate your taking on with 13, that is, talk about the tip of the iceberg, $13,000 of a, we're talking several million dollars, I would imagine, and when you start looking at the stuff besides the vehicles that goes into your running the department in terms of equipment. It'd be very helpful to have a picture that our citizens could see over time, how much we've got invested in it and how much we need to invest in it. So this is a good start. I'd certainly encourage you to broaden that topic for, to educate everybody. And as I say, perhaps at the end, I'll come back and talk, once again, talk about one of my favorite topics, which is the vehicles themselves.
Mr. Hodgkiss?
In the case of the self-contained breathing apparatuses and other equipment like that, do we not get something back because we turn around and sell it to other communities or other countries?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgkiss, we do get a credit for them, but they do kind of lose their, they lose their value dramatically at the end because they have to pass a test, a pressure test, and a lot of them have reached the lifespan of that bottle.
So we get credit back from what, the supplier?
We get credit back from the company that we deal with.
I see. So we don't recycle them to Latin America or someplace?
We have in the past, as we have in the past, certainly, and I'm not sure, I can't, you know what, I can't tell you right now if that's what in the plan for these ones. But one of the things that's changed with the bottles is the NFPA standard, which is what we're bound by, when the alarm goes off when you're working. And it used to be 20%, now it's going to be 30, 33% when you're 33% of your bottles. So it's giving you a shorter work period. So the new bottles that we're looking at are a longer, it's a more expensive bottle, but allows you to work longer and still get out with a good margin of safety.
And do you have to leave when that alarm goes off?
You're supposed to leave when that alarm goes off, yeah.
Easier, too, it sounds like, if it's a bigger bottle.
Pardon me?
Bigger bottles.
No, the technology is, it actually, it's a little bit longer, a little bit longer bottle, a little bit of different backpack, but it's actually, all this technology has just gotten lighter and better through the years.
Great.
So now we'll move on to any changes in our proposed fees, which there are a couple. As I mentioned earlier, there's a small increase to the wildland assessment fee, and for properties in the foothill zone, there, for each property or assessment, it increased 58 cents, and in the extreme fire zone, each property assessment increased 72 cents. We also had a small decrease in our fire inspections, Title 19 fees of $2. The Title 19, our fire inspections of long-term assisted care facilities, daycare centers, that type of, and the health and safety code designates and regulates how much we can charge for those inspections, which is $50. So we had to reduce that by $2.
Mr. Hart?
Are these fees controlled by the state legislature, or?
This particular one is.
That second one, the $2 one?
Yes.
So we have no flexibility. The first one, though, that's a locally assessed fee that's based on property values. Is it a property tax assessment? Well, how is it? Tell me more about that.
We have a fire marshal, Joe Poirier, to answer that question.
Jim, there you go.
We'll be coming to you next week with the assessment district, and we'll explain this in greater detail.
That's okay, then.
There's an engineer's report that comes out with the assessment district every year, and in the course of that engineer's report, we usually go with the CPI increase, and that's what that represents, is the Southern District CPI.
Okay. I guess my big-picture thought is that it's a relatively small amount of money, and it's extremely small increase in cost, and yet it is probably the most critical thing, you know, in terms of fire prevention that we're doing as a community. And it just seems like there, I'm not aware of sensitivity of homeowners about that kind of a price level in considering what's at stake there, and I just wonder, you know, should we be talking about orders of magnitude different effort? You know, just plant that seed for the next week when we come back, I guess.
Well, yes, and as a matter of fact, I'll have to run that by the city attorney and several others.
Just be good to know about all of that.
When we put that up for election initially, that was the, the proposed amount, was that it would be allowable according to the CPI within a certain range.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the changes to our fees. And we did have some minor changes to our staffing and programs. The first one is a program change. We're carving out a new program out of our operations program, and we're calling it Fire Training and Recruitment. And this, basically, we have a battalion chief and a training captain, and they run in basically their own operation. It's, we want to, it's for better reporting and control and objectives, they should have their own program. So it's, they're basically part of the operations program, there's zero cost to this, but they have their own program so that they can run the academy and keep things separate. And then we do have a part-time, hourly administrative fire captain. We're paying for, and he conducts PIO media and Public Information Officer functions, media relations, and special projects for the Fire Department. And he's a part-time, and we're paying for that. Again, it's no cost or no additional cost through a vacant warehouse administration position that we have. So we're using some of the funding for a vacant position for this. So now we're to the last part of the presentation, we're going to start talking about our objectives and key initiatives. So I mentioned earlier, we were talking, spoke of in the capital outlay about a new live burn training system. And with that, I think it'd be best for Chief McElroy to speak to that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council, as you're aware, we have our training facility on South Olive, although you wouldn't probably guess that that's the street that it's on, but that's where it is. And we, for the past several years, have been putting a request into the capital improvement project to redo our cement tower, the cement burning, cement tower that we have, and primarily due to the amount of burning that's been done in the bottom floor over the past 30-plus years. And what it's done is it's caused spalling of the concrete and breaking, breaking away of the concrete. And so we've had some engineering reports done on it. And it's our feeling that, while we estimate, you know, $400,000, $500,000, once you start taking that thing apart, you have no idea what we're going to get into. So in the interim, a lot of our people have been going to trainings around the state, and we have found that there's an alternative, and it's a modular, we'll have some slides in a second, a modular training, burn training system, and it's basically kind of like shipping containers. And they're configured in a way that we can do burning in those, and you're only burning Class I fuels, which is basically like a wooden pallet. And it teaches people how to be exposed to fire, and how to use really reduced amounts of water to deal with what we're dealing with, and also how to use and control air movement in the, in the system. So it's, for us, it's an NFPA-required training that we haven't been able to do. And so we look at this as a, as an area-wide training, training facility as well. So Santa Barbara County will be able to use it, Montecito Fire, Carp Summerlin, and so we're asking for 120 for this, and we're pursuing grants, and I'm very optimistic we'll be able to get the rest of the funding done through grants.
NFPA?
National Fire Protection Association.
Thank you.
That's kind of our governing, our governing body.
Are the other agencies, do they pay your department when they use the facilities? Like, is there a rental fee or something?
They haven't traditionally, and there have been little fixes that we do that they help with, that they throw some money at. But it's, I think it's in our interest as a community to have, you know, when something big happens, they're coming to help us, we're coming to help them. So it's been a cooperative thing, but we get...
And I know that Hancock facility now in Lompoc, I mean, you want training closer to home, I would think, because that would, that would cost quite a bit to bring people out, current staff, as opposed to an academy or something like that.
And Madam Mayor, if we were sending, if we were required to send people to Allen Hancock to get this type of training, just the overtime costs alone over, over a year, or two, or three, or four would be significant. So we feel this is...
Would be enough to pay for one in our own backyard.
Yeah, we feel like this is really the smart way to go. And we can still use the tower for 90% of the functions we use it for, for high-rise training, for rope training, for ladders. So it's still, we're just not going to be burning in it anymore.
So the containers, I am, is this, does this have to go like through design review or anything like that? I'm almost scared to ask, but has to go through ABR?
We are working with Public Works, and because it's in the coastal zone, they have a number of issues, but the, the, one of the things I think the people are concerned about is the water, the drain off of the water. But like I said, the whole idea of these is we're using a lot less water than we normally would be using. And so the amount of water that we'll be draining off this is really insignificant. We will probably, you know, we could conceivably lose more water draining out the hoses than we will actually using them on the fire. So, and it's, for us, it's a, especially with water being, you know, such a premium, it's a real efficient way for us to train.
Great, thank you.
So anyway, the first, first phase of the, this modular system teaches us about fire behavior and how fires build and go through the stages leading up to a significant fire from an incipient phase. The second one allows us to experiment with interior attack and move through, move through more of a complex structure, and enable how to communicate inside of that and get people to feel some heat without putting them in a lot of danger. And in both cases, the burning is only done in one portion of the, of the prop. So in the end, when we have to replace something, we're only replacing one part of it, you're not replacing the whole system. You're just, we would be taking off one end of it, clamping a new one on, and you're ready to go again. But this is the inside of our, our current tower. And like I said, 30-plus years of burning in there has just caused a lot of damage to the concrete. So we're, it's, this is a smarter way for us to go. We really feel strongly about it. And like I said, once you start tearing that thing apart and start finding more significant issues, we won't be able to use it for any of the, the other training needs that we have. This way, we just keep it as-is and do a workaround.
Is it going to work for that purpose for a fairly good length of time, even though, you know, structurally, obviously, there's some issues, but it's not, it's not... you know, structurally, obviously, there's some issues, but it's not, it's not an issue for that purpose? It's an issue for using it for burning?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hart, we don't feel like it's a significant issue at all in terms of the other uses of the building. We're not putting tremendous amounts of weight on it. The amount of people that we had put on there does not add up to significant load on the building itself.
Good, thanks.
And like I said before, in this advanced phase, we'll be able to simulate multi-story, you know, multiple fires in a single structure. So we, like I said, we feel it will be a good regional training opportunity. And like I said, because of the regional aspect of it, I think we have a lot of funding possibilities, and I'm very optimistic about getting this funded. It's modular. And as you can see from the existing towers in the upper center of your photo, the Prop 1 to the upper right, and Prop 2 down below, and it's, the right side of the slide kind of runs parallel to the railroad tracks, and so the ocean is over there. And then the other facilities you see are part of Public Works and Water Resources. That's El Estero down at the bottom.
So we wanted to also show you, this is, this slide is showing us our prime event system. One of the dangers firefighters face is the diesel exhaust inside the fire stations. And you see these yellow tubes. We call that the prime event system. That's a trademark name. And basically, it's like a vacuum cleaner. It's hooked up to the exhaust pipes of the apparatus, and the exhaust, the diesel exhaust that has carcinogens, is very toxic, gets on clothing, gets on station walls, is known to cause cancer, now gets funneled out of the fire stations. And from a grant we received in 2011, it took us two years to get the permitting and approvals, but we got them all eventually. And this last year, we were able to implement that system in all eight fire stations. And you can see, it was a final cost of $185,000. The city spent $37,000. The project came in under budget, about $55,000. So that's a demonstration of us getting grant funding and using it for the safety of the firefighters. And then here's another example. This year, in 2012, in cooperation with Carpandaria Summerlin Fire Protection District and Montecito Fire Protection District, we were able to outfit our department with all-new portable radios. And you can see, the cost of that's $431,000. And we had to match $86,000, 20% portion of it, but this is funding that's, you know, to our advantage. And we have equipment now that is FCC compliant, narrow-banded, and there's been new regulations that we've had to change the radio equipment. So we're excited about that.
And the county didn't participate in this because they're doing their own system? Or a different approach?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hart, I think the county had another process going on where they had done a major radio purchase. They weren't in as great a need as we did. So we did this in cooperation with Carp Summerlin and Montecito.
Okay. And then, when you're in a mutual aid situation, you have folks coming from all over the area, you have a system to coordinate how this all works, depending on, I mean, different levels of technological advance?
We have a, we have a Santa Barbara Operational Area Communications Plan, and those, there's state-supplied frequencies and federally-supplied frequencies where we can communicate with people that are on end. And there's, the incident is, as it gets more complex, will be assigned a frequency that people can check in on.
Okay, good, thanks.
I could add to your question, though. Councilmember Hart, that prime event system I showed, the county and their stations, they have that same system. So we can actually have our engines hook up to that, or their engines could come into our stations if ever need be, so. And then this is a final slide, just showing about that SCBA, the Self-contained Breathing Apparatus Systems, and what they look like on and off the firefighters. And we're in competition for this grant, and it gives you an idea of what we're looking at there. So that concludes our formal presentation. If you have any more follow-up questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, so what's the lifespan of our current apparatus for self-breathing?
For?
With the breathing apparatus? What is the equipment we have on hand now? How much time have we got left before we?
We're done in our last. Yeah. Yeah, we're, as Chief Bryden was, we have, the bottles have a 15-year lifespan. They have to be hydro-tested every three years. So we're kind of coming to the end with a number of those. We're going to have to purchase, make a bottle purchase regardless. But what we're hoping to do is get this grant and make the purchase. It includes what's called a 5.5 instead of, well, we're in a 4.5 now. And so we'll get the expanded time parameters for work periods.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two areas of questioning. One is, I would love to see at some point a spreadsheet. How many, how many major, pieces of major apparatus does the department have?
I'm going to have Chief Bryden talk, he's been working with Fleet Management on this issue in particular.
We have 11 frontline major pieces of apparatus and four reserve.
No, 15?
That's not including what's out at the airport.
Okay. And then also, there's probably a whole bunch of, not a whole bunch, but smaller vehicles as well.
There are quite a few small ones.
So it would, I'd love to see a spreadsheet. And now, is this in the fire department's budget, or now is this all transferred over to the vehicle budget at this point?
This, what you're looking for actually would live in Public Works and motor pools.
So when we get to that, then I need to raise those questions.
Well, I'm not sure what their presentation's going to look like, but, you know, they do have that spreadsheet, and we have it also, and we could provide it, too.
Okay, just of the, I imagine that the fire equipment is just one of the, you know, biggest, baddest pieces of the equation, because they're just such a large, long-lived, expensive.
It is. And anecdotally, you know, a fire truck is used in frontline status for 16 years and then moves to reserve for 10. And then after that, it's, you know, either auctioned or, in a recent case, we actually donated a very old piece of apparatus to Allen Hancock College.
Okay. Well, if I'm missing the boat on that, having been shown to me somewhere else, forgive me, but that's-
And just so it's clear, where it's funded or it's budgeted, it's budgeted two places. It's budgeted in the fire department budget as what they pay every year to Public Works for reserve or replacement.
Right.
And then it's budgeted in Public Works and their fleet management or fleet replacement. And then what they do is they do it for the whole city.
Right.
And then, obviously, they're in consultation every year with the fire department about their needs and changing needs and things like that. And right now, the program is pretty much fully funded. So we're on this replacement schedule that, you know, Chief Bryden mentioned, and we basically got to a point where we're fully funded. Whereas 10, 12 years ago, we basically had to come to the council every year as a capital improvement project to replace a fire truck. Now, we spread it out every year so that it's more orderly, and we don't get caught up in the hiccups of day-to-day, you know, year-to-year budget problems.
Yeah. And what would that number be this year for, would the fire department be contributing to the, for its vehicles?
For the vehicle replacement, I believe it's about $450,000 this year.
Okay, great. And then the second area of question I had was in the area of the wildland plan. And I believe that's getting to be a decade-old kind of thing, maybe roughly. And what is the cycle of updating that? What, is there a time, as with other plans, where it's revisited? And I'm imagining that what we've succeeded in doing and is behind us, and what we're looking forward to do, would come up as an issue?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we're, I believe, in our eighth year, Joe, of this program?
The Assessment District.
The Assessment District. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, there's a plan. There's also a wildland plan. And that plan, obviously, the Assessment District is a big piece of that. But the plan includes-
The plan includes the whole front country, but yeah, we're constantly working through the areas in that plan, and a lot of it is in the Wildland Benefit Assessment District.
My question had to do with the plan itself. We can talk, maybe we can talk offline about that?
Yeah.
And just see what kind of cycle, in other words, all of these things have shelf lives, and we come back around and look at them again. And that's my question, is what is the shelf life of that plan, and where are we in that?
Okay. You want to address that, Joe?
Well, just, as they say.
I'll be glad to meet with you on that, Councilmember White.
Mr. Hart?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me. Councilmember White, I think you need to exercise some caution about the wildland fire plan. If I recall, you were accused yourself last week.
Well, I can appreciate that on the Assessment District, and maybe, and this is good conversation to have, because the plan includes substantial, significantly more than just the Assessment District. So that's the point.
Thank you. I'll follow up with you offline.
Mr. Hart?
My question's kind of regional in the sense of aviation support for the department when there's major incidents. A couple of years ago, there was problems with the Santa Maria Airport facility. Has that all been worked out? Are there any lingering issues like that that we ought to be aware of, council or the community?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hart, that due to a lot of really good work by the Santa Barbara County Fire Chiefs and private citizens and some retired Forest Service people, the Santa Maria Air Tanker Base is open to us year-round. It's open today.
Great.
I think there's a DC-10 sitting up there and a few other planes up there right now. So that's been, that's been addressed. And the flight time is not significant into our area, once you get it, once you get up and rolling. The problem nationally is that we just have to invest more in air assets. We have a limited fleet, and that fleet moves all around the country, depending on, earlier in the year, you're looking at the southeast, then it moves into southwest, and then into the western United States. So it's constantly moving around. But we had a good presentation at the Natural History Museum last week that it's going to be available to you all here within a few days, and it talks in detail about that. But one of the things that's really, a real significant change in Southern California especially, is that night flying capability. Seven, eight years ago, that just wasn't a possibility at all. And we were kind of ahead of the game, actually, because of the Santa Barbara Firefighters Alliance buying night-vision helicopters for the county helicopters. So by the time the T in Hesey's ear came around, we did have people that were flying all night long. That's now expanded. Ventura County has it, San Diego County, Orange County, Los Angeles County, and the Forest Service is doing night flying for the first time in a very, very long time. So in terms of aviation, I think our outlook has improved, and I think it's going to improve even more.
That's really good news. So the initial impetus for this is more often local agencies, because the Forest Service is just so strapped for resources? For example, looking ahead, using drones for surveillance and looking down on incidents and things like that, is that likely to come from the Forest Service, or is that likely to come from local agencies?
Councilmember Hart, right now, I know that we have a downlink that the Homeland Security Fund's, was allowed to place one on a sheriff's helicopter that will give us a camera. We used it in our airport drill this year. So it gives you real-time photography of what's going on in a variety of instances. But in the case you're talking about, in a wildfire, those of us have experienced it, generally, we're sitting down here just looking at this cloud-
Right.
-coming at us. This will give us an eye in the sky that'll be up there behind it, can even get very specific on the canyon it's traveling, the path that it's traveling. So it gives us a tremendous amount of intel that we wouldn't have normally had. And I think the sophistication of the intelligence gathering stuff is, for wildfire, is pretty unlimited right now.
So it's fully infrared, every other thing that you could conceive of?
That one isn't infrared, but that technology is obviously out there. It's just whether, it's gotten to the point where fire agencies can afford it, but it's becoming so commonly used now.
So is it typically something that Department of Defense is not using anymore, and they're turning it over for civilian uses?
No, no.
Or these are built to made, to order specifically for?
I think it's built to order specifically. And then, you know, there's just commercially available drones. Number, I know a number of local photographers are using them and gathering images right now for their work, so.
Right, well, thank you.
Somewhat comforting, I think.
Yeah.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've been talking about fighting fires, but over 70% of your calls are medical. Are we doing anything to increase our abilities or capacities medical-wise or training-wise, since that's the predominant call that we get?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I, yes, this is the short answer. A couple of years ago, we revamped our EMT, which are Emergency Medical Technicians. We revamped our training program for EMTs, and have really been keeping outstanding records with that, that we, I don't think we were as significantly before. And we've also hired a department medical director, Dr. Prechtowski, who goes through significant calls with us, sits in our EMT classes. So the level of feedback, the level of quality control in our medical response is, I think, better than it's ever been. And we're also, our records management system with medical response has gotten a lot better as well.
So if you're first on-site, can our crews exercise lifesaving measures, either breathing or resuscitation, whatever it is? I don't know, I'm fishing here.
Absolutely. And we have been, as long as I've been on the department, and, you know, we're, just because of the placement of fire stations and versus the placement of private ambulance service, we are going to be there just by, just in the terms of numbers, not because of the quality of the ambulance company. It's just where, the chances of us arriving earlier are high. And so, yes, we absolutely participate in lifesaving measures.
And are people talking to emergency centers when they're doing this? Are they acting on their own? I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but I am curious about it.
Okay, well, our calls come in through the Combined Communications Center, which is at the police station, currently going to be moving to the Granada Garage. Okay, once, we are dispatched, the county is dispatching the ambulance, so we can talk back and forth to each other, yes. And actually, that is something to change this year, where the ambulance is talking on our frequency. So we have an idea when they're coming. We can, we can give them, you know, you get a, we call a size-up, a medical size-up, when you arrive on scene. You give the condition of the patient, what you're dealing with, what the situation, is there multiple patients? Is there, is there an extrication involved? Is it a vehicle accident? So everybody that's coming, we're giving information out the whole time we're there.
So do you get hands-on advice when this is going on? You know, he's turning blue, what do I do, whatever?
Well, we're, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we should, you know, hopefully, our level of training, we're recognizing that, and we're able to do that. I think we, what we do offer in that, that service, is our dispatchers can do what's called Emergency Medical Dispatcher, EMD. So when there, someone calls from a home and says somebody is here and turning blue, they not only get somebody responding, but they're able to aid that person in teaching them how to roll the person over, maybe start breathing for him, start chest compressions. So that's happening at the dispatcher level rather than at the first responder level.
And so you understand, the reason I'm asking you this is that I want the folks out there to have a greater understanding and appreciation of what you do. I think if we just say, oh, the fire guys are there, we leave it at that. But when we see in-depth what happens, it's really significant.
Yeah, we're active participants, active participants in emergency medical response, and we have been throughout the history of this department.
Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question, Chief. In terms of proactive observation, especially coming into this obviously pretty dramatic set of a fire season, do we have, what kind of observation capability do we have on an ongoing basis prior to a fire sparking? In other words, what kind of eyes are on the prize now? I know certain homeowners' organizations have spoken about it. Some of the guys in the county have talked about, you know, satellite, GAI, overlay observation. Do we have anything in place, or are there plans in place to basically watch out over the foothills and the wildland fire areas as we get into this situation?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Rouse, I know that the county, we've talked at the county chief level, that they're, and I'm drawing a blank on it now, but there's sensors that you can place along the front country, and that's one of the things that Chief Dyer is very interested in getting. It's like a first alert warning system. One of the benefits and one of the realities of living in the Santa Barbara front country, though, is there's not too much, not too often that the smoke starts up there, that somebody isn't calling, several somebodies aren't calling immediately, and that's 24 hours a day. But there are, we are pursuing other electronic monitoring devices that are coming online that weren't available a couple of years ago, or were unaffordable a couple of years ago. But, so we're looking at that. We're looking, when we go into red flag alert, we're closing certain roads, we're closing access to certain areas, and we're sending patrols out. And that happens throughout the county. We're all talking to each other. We'll have, earlier this year, and I imagine we'll have one later this week, the National Weather Service will call- Weather Service will call a conference call, and we'll have all the county chiefs on it. And they'll talk about, okay, what are you planning on doing? What's the weather look like? And then people say, "Okay, we're going to upstaff an engine, we're going to have a bulldozer staged here, CAL FIRE is going to send a strike team into the area." So we're communicating all the time and moving resources as the need arises. Can I ask you a question? Okay.
One more, Mr. Hart.
I guess while we have you here, this is the perfect time. Maybe you could just talk about how serious this fire season is looking ahead. You know, the fuel load, the super-low humidity, all the issues that are kind of coming together, just so people have a sense of, you know, what's ahead of us potentially.
Mayor Snyder, Councilmember Hart, we're obviously in a drought cycle right now. We actually benefited from the rains we had in March. While it may have not seemed significant, it raised the fuel moistures to a degree that we hadn't expected. That being said, I'm sure it's going to, you know, with what we're experiencing now, if we have some more heat like this, it's going to, you know, drop that fuel moisture down again. I think that we live in an area where you have to consider yourself in fire season every year. Some years are more significant than others, and with us, the wild card is the sundowner winds and down-canyon winds. So that's, knowing that, you know, the things that we encourage people to do is to have a plan, to create defensible space. You can learn about the Ready, Set, Go program on our websites or the county fire's website, but it's just something that we live with here, and it's, does it look like a bad year? Yes, it does look like a bad year, but...
So did last year.
So did last year. And I think it's really important to remember, the last two significant fires that we had here were in November and May.
Right. The season is the year.
The season, it's a full year season.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any public speaker slips for the Fire Department. I think you're all here for the Police Department, so, right, yeah, okay. Did you want it for the Fire Department? Okay, come right up, since they're here, because they're going to probably go back to Station 1 or wherever.
Madam Mayor, dear councilmembers, Jan von Jurt. I just had a quick question, which I've been asked before from my kids. Where do you take the water from, as we are in a drought right now?
Okay, if you can address us, and then we'll have the question answered.
Okay, thank you. Could you ask the question, where the water comes from during a drought? If we use ocean water, or if there's a backup supply stash somewhere?
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, the water we'll use will come out of our normal water system, it'll come out of the reservoir system. It's really important to remember that water is not going to put out the type of wildfire we have. It's a tool that we'll use in addition to hand crews, to bulldozers, to aviation, to backburning, and kind of making, try to make the fire move the way you want it to move, back into the black, back into rock, to a road where you can have some effective action with it. But we're not going to put out a $5,000, or 5,000-acre wildfire with water. It's just not going to happen. It's just one of the tools that we will use, but it's not the only tool by any means.
Great, an important one, though. Okay, I think that's all the questions. I appreciate, did you want to add anything? Go right ahead.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to expand a little bit on Councilmember White's question.
And your mic needs to be on. There you go.
Again, my microphone. Just to differentiate between the, and Councilmember White asked about the wildland fire plan. The 2004 wild plan is distinct from the 2006 Assessment District vote. And the 2004 wildland fire plan, you're correct, is coming up on a decade and is constantly in the state of renewal. Some of the things that we have been looking at in terms of renewing that is that we have a, currently working off a grant from Public Works, and we're having a private consultant along with Ann Marks and myself review the evacuation routes that we had planned in that original 2004 wildland fire plan. In addition to that, CAL FIRE came by about two years ago, and through the give-and-take of negotiations, we actually renegotiated the confines of the district itself. And by that, I mean the wildland areas, not the Assessment District. So it's constantly in a course of change, and we have been talking about the entire plan as a prospect for change in the near future. It is partially EIR-dependent because of the Assessment District, not the Assessment District, but because of the vegetation management units that are in it. But that would be a matter for another EIR to expand or include additional vegetation management units. So the answer to your question is yes, it's on our mind all the time.
Madam Mayor, if I may, and first of all, I certainly will be, let's talk with our attorney about where I can go and where I can't. But this is one of those areas which is, I appreciate hearing about it. The planning cycle is so important for refreshing people's, our citizens' memories and having citizen input on as well. So that's part of why I raise the question, as with our land use plans, to just, it's an educational opportunity as well, as well as the places of importance might be changed and emphasis be different from one decade to the next. So that's why I raise the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just say how much I appreciate the foresight and planning that your department has done for years. I know as devastating as the T in Hezozita fires were, they would have been a lot worse had it not been for, with communicating with the community about evacuation planning. And then also, the nighttime goggles, I think, saved a lot of homes over those two fires in particular, and we were one of the first to have access to them. So I appreciate that. And that was due to a grant from the Firefighters Alliance, so that community building was really very important. So, thank you. I think that's it for your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready, Chief.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I have my staff with me today. We're going to team teach it, I guess, team present today. But we're, just to tell you that a couple of things that are not on the screen I wanted to share with you, that continues being a great success for us, is our partnership with the school district. We have reached several thousand young people over the school year, school year is ending. Our beat coordinators have continued to conduct classes on bullying, gang violence, narcotic use, good citizenship. We've had hundreds of visits with all the children. The beat coordinators have continued to work with the Community Action Committee, to meet with parents at all the schools, to talk about some of their needs at the elementary school level. And we're going to continue to have that partnership in the next coming school year. And it's been very, very successful, but I wanted to share that with you. The other that is not on the list that you might want to ask us later down the road, and maybe Captain Witten will address it a little more, is the issue of 600 State Street, the corridor, and the issues that we've had there. And I wanted to share with you some statistics, current statistics, actually from March 10th to April 7th, just at that location. We certainly have increased the police presence there, and I believe it has been successful. We have really done a phenomenal job. In that time, March 10th through April 7th, we've completed 596 misdemeanor citations for a variety of things. We've made 18 felony arrests just in that time period, and we've made 47 misdemeanor arrests in that time period. We continue to address it aggressively in terms of some of the issues that our business community has been concerned with. Our TPF officers and their sergeant, Sergeant Warren Holkey, has continued his dialogue with them on a daily basis with all our businesses, and I believe that through these efforts, I believe we've been very successful. But we are going to continue that, because it is an issue for you, and it is for us and for the community, especially the business community. So we're going to continue to do that. How we've done it is to move people around and change their shifts, even take away some of their other duties to be able to do that. It has not impacted us negatively at all. It is a priority, and we're going to continue to stay on it. So I wanted to share that with you today, that we're going to continue addressing that in an aggressive manner. Today, we're going to talk about a department overview, our expenditures, our staffing, and our P3 and divisional highlights. The deputy chief will hit the majority of it, and the captains are here to discuss their different commands. Currently, we are at 210 total permanent staff. Of the 210, we have 13 managers, including myself, 197 employees and supervisors, that's sworn, and civilian employees. And we've increased the one-record specialist position, which we appreciate very much. We also have hourly employees, who have really, if you notice the hours that they've given as an hourly employee, where they get, they do not have benefits, but we pay them hourly. They work in a variety of jobs around the Police Department that has been very, very, has impacted us very greatly to have those people there on an hourly basis and not full-time. Not going to read every box that's up there, most of you have seen this before, there really are no changes. But as you know, our department is made up of my office and the administration at the top, and three distinct different divisions. The Administrative Services Division is Captain Gil Torres. The Investigative Division is Captain Alex Altavilla, and our Patrol Division captain is Captain Dave Witten. And when we get to the question-and-answer period, if you want to discuss any of those issues that they have in their command, they're prepared to do that. They're also going to share with you some of the highlights of their divisions this year, and what we're thinking about for the future. Response times are always a priority for us, as they are with the Fire Department. I wanted to share this with you. Response times for Part 1 crime, response time yearly average, the left, top-left, 2009 to 2013, the year average, our goal is always six minutes response time to Part Ones, priority ones, I should say. And in 2013, we averaged five minutes and eight seconds. Next to that, you see the response times year-to-date for Part Ones, priority ones, excuse me. And if you notice, this is March year-to-date, and in March of this year, we were at five minutes, five seconds. So we're getting there quickly. Sometimes it's because we're there already, very close, or we have a lot of people working. And I just think this is a phenomenal goal that we've set, and have been able to accomplish it, and even be more successful at the response times to our community's needs. In terms of Part 1 crime trends, we want to talk about total violent crime by month, 2009 to 2014. What's interesting is that in October, our highest point was October of 2013, where in that one month, we had 50 violent crimes. The good news, and it is great news, actually, is that this March, this last March of 2014, it dramatically went down to 34 in that month. And this is all violent crime. Our property crime that about a year ago, or a year and a half ago, was just overwhelming us with the crimes that were occurring. Again, in May of 2013, we were at 237 just for that month. And today, March of 2014, we're at 182. So crime is going down in both areas, and we're very supportive of our efforts in terms of our Bureau, our Detective Bureau, being able to do some great investigations, our patrol staffs, as you saw in a couple of slides earlier, response times to these crimes are getting quicker and quicker. But it's a team effort, and I believe that's why the city's crime is down. We're going to go over our general fund overview. I'm going to have the deputy chief go over some slides with you. The captains will come in in a little bit, and then I'll close, and then we'll take some questions at that time, unless you have a question now. Deputy Chief.
Actually, I do have a question, if I could.
Yes, sir.
You cited some large monthly figures for the 600 block of state. Do we have anything that can be a baseline for that, showing how much greater they were than previous months?
No, I don't have that with me, but we can certainly get that for you. We're watching it on a weekly basis, because we have committed ourselves to moving things around to address that issue. But it goes beyond that. It goes beyond the 600 block in both directions. But I don't have anything for you today, but we can certainly get that.
My suggestion would be to do it from a year ago, just to see how we're looking.
We'll do that for you.
Thank you.
Frank?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. Frank Maddox, Deputy Police Chief. I'm going to present the general fund numbers for fiscal year 15. What we see here is a chart showing an overview of the end-of-year, fiscal year 14 projected, followed by the original two-year plan, which was adopted last year by council for fiscal year 15, the recommended adjustments, and then the percentage change overall. And I'll just cut quickly to the point right here. You'll see that the total percentage change is less than 1/10 of 1%. So essentially, this is very much a status quo budget from what we had originally presented last year. It's changed very, very little. And as the chief has already alluded to, the most significant change in our budget is the addition of a parking, of a record specialist in our records bureau. So other than that, the budget is very, very similar. However, there have been some changes, and I'm going to draw your attention to those changes. We see right here, where salary and benefits actually appear to have decreased in the recommended budget as opposed to the original plan. And this is because the PERS rates, which were originally projected, have not panned out to come as high as originally predicted. So overall, as a department, we're saving about $200,000 in PERS costs. The reason why this is only $111,000 is primarily due to the record specialists, the added salary and benefits of the record specialists. So essentially, except for the PERS and the record specialists, a completely unchanged budget. Supplies and services, we see a very tiny increase of about 2%. Really, this is just about inflation. So some of our anticipated costs for, you know, bullets, gasoline, everything that you'd normally buy to run a police department, just a small increase year-over-year on that of about $60,000. Our allocated costs have gone up about $76,000. This is almost entirely attributable to the vehicle funds. As you know, we pay in every year, as all departments do, to have money to replace our vehicles, and that has increased a little bit for this year, to the tune of about 4%. And then, equipment and capital costs essentially are unchanged. So once again, about a 1/10 of 1% increase. This is what our pie chart looks like if we break it up by major object. And what I really want to emphasize here is that we are a labor-intensive department. Salary and benefits make up 86% of our budget. So when we're really looking at making adjustments to our budget, it almost always comes straight down to personnel. Supplies and services is our next major category, allocated costs, which I've already mentioned. And you can see just what a true sliver our equipment and capital is. So very, very little discretionary money when it comes to how we run our department. It's very much pre-programmed by how many people we have employed at the time. These are our major revenues by object, and we have our fees and fines, which are primarily parking citations. We also get some municipal court fees that are given to us by the courts as a byproduct of people paying for their speeding tickets. And we see, we are projecting just a small increase of about 2.7 year-over-year. Service charges, which are your false alarm fees, your vehicle release fees, for example, when someone gets their car towed for a DUI arrest, they come in and we charge a certain fee to try to recoup the cost of what it took us to actually tow the vehicle. So that would be an example of a service charge or a fee. Also, our crossing guards, you see them out there. The schools actually pay us about 50% of what it takes to fund that program. So that is captured in this category as well. Small increase in that area. Our transfers in, this is the money that we get from the street sweeping program to run the program. So this primarily comes in through the Public Works Department, and they reimburse our costs as a police agency. our costs as a police agency, so we're essentially have total cost recovery to run that program, and that's captured in this category right here and transferred in. And also, we get state money from the Office of Traffic Safety to help us do traffic enforcement here in Santa Barbara. So that's that category, and you can see it's very, very small change. Intergovernmental are the, we get a supplemental law enforcement funding from the state. It's called the COPS program, so we budget that in this category, as well as traffic safety money is also budgeted in here. We essentially break up the traffic safety funds into two categories. One is to pay for the DUI nurse, who actually does the blood extraction from our DUI drivers, and then the other is the cost of operating traffic enforcement in Santa Barbara, and we break that up into two categories. Some go into the transfer in and other in the intergovernmental. In the other revenue category, these are our, the revenues we recoup for special event enforcement. So for example, anytime there's a cruise ship that comes into Santa Barbara, or someone wants to do something at the county bowl, anytime someone contracts with the police department for extra police services through a special event, we recapture, or recapture that in the other revenues category, as well as Sabernet funding. Santa Barbara participates in a Santa Barbara regional narcotic enforcement team, and that unit or that group will actually pay for the funds to offset the cost of our participation in that team. So in other words, we send a detective to work on the Sabernet team, and then Sabernet will cover the cost of that officer. And Sabernet works not only in the city of Santa Barbara, but throughout the county. Just about every police department and the sheriff's department give one person that participated on Sabernet, so we divide the cost up equally in that regard. Other than that, you'll notice a significant change in the miscellaneous grant funds of 73% decrease, and I cover this every year because it looks like such a dramatic drop of approximately $690,000, $668,000. And what this is, is every year, we get grants from the state of California for about the past 15 years to do enhanced traffic enforcement in Santa Barbara, but we never, we can't predict 100% that the grants are going to be available for us. So we don't budget them. We simply come back to council and ask council to accept the grant funds at that time and to appropriate them to our budget. So it looks like it's going to be a decrease, but my prediction is, overall, we'll get the grant funds next year as we have for the last 15 years.
Can you go over the street sweeping thing again? So someone gets a street sweeping ticket, that money, because you said the public works reimburses you for the cost of the street sweeping program, but yet someone who gets a ticket, they pay that to the police department. Does that money go to the public works department and then comes back to you, or does it, can you explain those two things for me? You see what I'm talking about?
When somebody is cited for a street sweeping parking violation, that goes to public works because it's a specific, and then they reimburse the police department for the cost of the parking enforcement officers that actually issued the tickets.
So that's at 841,000.
That's correct. And that's actually, as I recall, it's about $300,000, and the remainder of that, I believe, is out of the traffic safety funds, is where certain citations go into a fund and then are transferred in.
Okay, so other parking violation tickets, that goes directly to the police department?
That goes directly to the police department.
So it's only street sweeping that has this?
That's correct.
Okay. And can just, it's always good to remind the public for like a 90-minute parking, you know, violation or something, it, we get, it's a certain amount, but a lot of that has to do with state cost or court fees that are imposed on us. Do you know what percentage that is, or what the dollar amounts is, are, for example?
Yes, it's about 25%, which is forwarded to the state. So about a $44 ticket and about $10 goes to the state.
Okay, that's just something that's always good for people to know. Mr. Hart?
So the other revenues, if I understood it correctly, is the funding that comes from charging folks for different levels of engagement with community events? Is that, did I get that right?
That's correct, yes.
And so just a little explanation of why you're expecting a $100,000 drop in that category.
Oh, thank you so much.
Seems like we have more events than ever before.
Right, thank you so much. The Sabernet was previously funded out of that category. That has now been moved to the miscellaneous grant funding.
Okay, got it.
So it's just in accounting, it's really not a reduction.
Okay, thank you.
This is just a pie chart reflecting what we just went over, and once again, the major source of our revenue are the parking citations, and it's just a pie chart breaking it all up, but you can see about half of our departmental revenues are parking sites, and that's the major goal. And then you'll notice the difference between the revenues for the two years, and the difference here is primarily all due to the fact that we have not budgeted for these anticipated grants. This time last year, we went through the exact same exercise, where I predicted once again we would get these grants. We did. Our budget was amended, and I expect that's what we'll do over the next several months. I'd like to talk quickly about staffing at the police department among our sworn officer strength, but before I go there, I want to refresh everybody as to some terms so that we can all recognize what I'm talking about, and that is, let me define these terms. Authorized strength refers to the number of positions, sworn positions specifically, which are authorized by city council in the budget for our police department. Operational strength refers to how many people of that group we've currently hired. So let's say we're authorized 142, and we've currently hired 138. So we're operating 138 bodies. They're employed, they work for us, and we're working with that group. However, not all of that group actually show up for work because some are injured, some are in the police academy and training, and that is our functional strength. So when I refer to functional strength, in a moment, we'll see a chart that demonstrates all this, I'm referring to the people that were actually doing police work, showing up, and these are the folks who are doing the boots on the ground and showing up for work because they're here. They're not injured, they're not on deployment overseas somewhere, functional strength. Vacancy refers to a position which is not filled in our function, in our authorized strength. And then an overhire is a position where we have added someone to our operational strength at and above our authorized strength. So we've simply hired above our funding capacity, and sometimes we do that in order to offset future anticipated vacancies. So it's sometimes helpful to think of these as being subsets of each other, with authorized strength being your largest group, operational strength being slightly smaller, and then functional strength smaller still. This is the slide that I presented two years ago when we presented the FY13 budget. At that time, we were authorized 141. We have overhired, so you can see, we overhired up to 143, but because of these 11 positions, we were actually functioning with 132. And the reason why I have a question mark here is you never know what your functional strength is going to be day-to-day, because you can come to work on Monday morning and find that three officers have been injured over the weekend, and you have to take them out. So this, this is a moving target every day. These two values tend to be a little more concrete. Obviously, the authorized strength in the budget is very solid, and then we overhire as needed in order to really offset future vacancies. However, you will see that this paradigm really doesn't work for us so much anymore because I've taken the same data and put it on this chart, and this is today's date right here. The blue value is our authorized strength of 142. This is what we are currently operating under the FY14 budget. However, we've hired to, there we go, my pointer, we've hired to 144, so we're actually too overhired at this particular time, and as you can imagine, those subsets no longer work because the red subset is now larger than the blue subset. But what is very distressing for us right now is we have a total of 17 officers or positions which are not part of our functional strength. So that is the difference between the level of this red column and this green column right here. This green column represents the functional strength, and we're 17 positions down. 12 are due to injuries. So these are police officers who are injured in the field, doing police work, some were victims of traffic accidents, some have been attacked by suspects, and they're out recuperating in some form or fashion right now. Two are out on family medical leave, so they've either had a child or adopted a child, and they have a right to take some time off, and that's where they are. One is out on a long-term personal sickness, and unfortunately, this employee cannot work. He's, he's out on a long-term injury, non-work-related injury. And then two are currently in the police academy right now. These two represents the difference between this blue line and the red line. So you can see we're overhired by these two positions, but nevertheless, it's a total of 17 positions down. The budget that we're presenting for next year, we're essentially anticipating keeping a, a operational strength and an authorized strength at the same levels. We may overhire as necessary in here, but I'm just not going to guarantee that at the time. You can see for the last several years, we've continually overhired. I predict that we will overhire as needed, but right now, for the purposes of the presentation, I'm just showing it as being level. What is interesting to note is how, as this value and this value have become more identical, this value tends to go up. And we had a pretty good plateau up here where we were operating at 132 officers as opposed to 127, which is where we currently are. And that's strictly a function of how many officers are out on injury. So when we-
When will the two finish their academy training?
They just started, so we have about a five-month window. And after that, we have about five months of in-house training, so those, those two officers won't be really in the field for about another 10 months.
We don't have any other academies scheduled at this point, or do we?
We do have an academy scheduled, and we've recruited for that. We've taken the written test for the officers, and we're going through the background phase. Captain Torres will talk more about this during his presentation, and I'll just steal one moment of thunder from him, and that is, it is very difficult to recruit and get the numbers up, and I won't go too much into that, other than to say it is a challenge for us. So where are we with staffing? Well, we will continue to use overhiring as necessary.
Sorry, we have some other lights on. Did you want to speak, have a question right now?
Yeah, is now the time to go into the prognosis on the 12 that are out injured with injuries? In other words, we're looking at long-term, short-term? Do you know when they're going to be back?
Some will be back quickly and some won't. You know, it's very varied, and I really can't go into it a whole lot of detail because, of course, they have their privacy rights and their injuries, but some will be coming back. 12 is a high number for us, about six to eight is normal, so, but some are coming back quickly, actually.
So will we be down to six shortly?
You know, I'll let Captain Widdum speak to that because we've been above 10 for months and months, and I think-
Well, at some point, let's just address that whenever it's appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Well, just to continue with that, I think what you're saying is, next fiscal year, you anticipate your functional strength to go up by just three officers, right, from 127 to 130?
That's correct, and it's because it's a average of where we've been over the last several years. So if we can get our function, if we can reduce the number of these injuries, then we'll once again return to the values that we were a few years ago. But with these injuries, the way they are, and 17 is about as high as I ever remember it, quite frankly, six to eight is about normal, so-
So you don't do the math based precisely on the situations with the individual officers and their injuries and their prognosis for getting back on the job? You're doing it as an average, for looking backwards historically in time?
Yes, and once again, we must remember that that value changes every day.
Yeah, and then new injury replaces somebody who's back on the job. Yeah, I get that. Extremely complicated.
So we're just kind of using an average of about six to eight injuries at a time, which is about what we reflect. It's a little better now than it was years ago because we don't have officers deployed overseas in Afghanistan and Iraq, so that's actually been a real, real boost for us.
Okay, thank you.
So our staffing paradigm is to continue to use the overhiring as needed, and generally speaking, we consider that number to be about five officers. We generally overhire at times when we're putting officers into a police academy above our authorized strength in anticipation of future vacancies, and that's what I predict we'll be doing in the next academy, which starts in the fall, that we will be overhired at that time. And if we continue to use that strategy, I think it'll be our best effort to keep our, you know, our boots in the ground at the highest level. It should be noted, however, that as we, I'll just back up here for a second, as we are in these overhired capacities, it does put a strain on our budget, as you might imagine, because we're now employing people that were not authorized by budget to hire. Traditionally, we've been able to cover the cost due to salary savings from vacancies prior to hiring those persons. So if they're only operational for six months of the year, that will, the salary savings for the first six months will cover the expenditure on the second six months. But sometimes, as these numbers become very close for the entirety of the year, it then becomes a budgeting concern for us near the end of the year.
Deputy Chief Maddox, so in the summary, the chief talked about with our focus on the 600 block and State Street security at this point in time. What kind of strain does that effort put on your tactical patrol force strength, and how sustainable is this, this effort going to be? Because we talked about our desire to continue these efforts, but obviously, you've got issues with people being out, a high number of people being out.
One of the, Madam Mayor, Mr. Rouse, part of what we've done is we've moved people around. We try very hard not to take from the patrol staffing that are answering calls for service in the black and whites. What we've been doing is we've been using the four beat coordinators, taking them off their projects in the community to walk a foot beat on State Street, as an example. We've taken some of our TPF folks and changed their hours to do the nighttime patrol of the 600 block. We've also used some of our narcotics units to do the same thing. So we're moving, we just keep moving people around, but what we, what we don't want to dive into and taking them away from their primary duty goes back to my second slide, which was the calls for service. We just try very hard not to dive into Captain Widdum's patrol team because most of those injuries already are patrol officers. So we use other avenues. We may take a detective or two out of the street, out of the bureau to do this, because we still think it's a priority on the State Street corridor. So we're getting it done. It does impact us, but everything impacts us on a daily basis because our priorities change all the time, and we just want to address the most, some of the most important things and utilize the bodies that we have. But we try very hard not to get into the staffing, the patrol staffing, to do as an example, your example of the 600 State Street project. We don't do that.
Thank you, Chief.
Just by way of review, is, last year, we increased police officer strength by one position. That position has been and continues to be assigned to the tactical patrol force, which does a lot of the street-level enforcement on State Street and on Milpa Street. So we've increased the size of that work unit by one over the last about eight, nine months. Took us a few, a little while to recruit and get someone into that position, but once we've put them in there, they've been there ever since.
Mr. Hart?
You know, just to continue with the conversation about the functional strength as opposed to the other categories, so are you, are you telling us probably that this is a very conservative or a conservative estimate, given the fact that there's an extraordinary number of people that are out injured compared to other years, or is this your more realistic number? Like, what I'm hoping for is the answer that, yeah, we probably are going to have a better functional strength than what this represents, but we want to be, we want to be transparent to the council, we want to be transparent to the community. I totally understand the interrelationship of all the complexities of all of this, and I would, you know, every department, I think, comes to us in budget times and is conservative about these kinds of things, just like you were talking about the grant revenues. Is there a reason for me to be hearing that that 127, or excuse me, 130 functional strength number is a conservative estimate of what you're going to be next year?
I would say I'm as accurate with it as I, as I can, you know?
Okay.
It's a bit of a swag because you really can't predict when someone's going to have a baby and they'll be off on medical leave for two months. These things just kind of come up out of the blue. I can tell you that about six to eight is what we run on a, on a month-in, month-out basis for injuries, and then a medical leave is really not an injury for a baby, it's just a family medical leave of absence. So, you know, about six to eight, maybe 10, is about average, so that's why we've used this spread right here.
Okay.
You know, I do suspect, you know, whether we're talking about 132, which is the high mark where we were, or presently 127 or 130, you can see, it's just one or two or three officers. With that, we will then move on for the divisional highlights with our patrol captain, Dave Widdam.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Dave Widdam. I'm the commander of the Patrol Division. And if you'll notice the picture there, I put a picture in the slide, because one of the things I wanted to spotlight, and I'm going to go over some highlights of the division that's happened and some key elements that we're going to be looking at in the upcoming year, is we have a new canine for the family. Officer Brian Miller was selected as the department's new canine officer in December, and the new canine that we have, his name is Loki, who had joined us in January. And I wanted to spotlight that, because the many positions we have at the Police Department, and they rotate, and officers come in positions and others, you know, and we rotate in our career development. The canine position is different, because that position lasts for the life of the dog. That can range from seven to up to nine years. So Loki and Officer Miller joined us, and there's an enormous amount of training that goes with qualifying a canine for the position for police use. And as they joined us just three weeks ago, Loki and his handler, Brian Miller, became fully certified as a canine handler. So it took that long to get that dog and the trainer certified, which we include in that is narcotics training. So both of our dogs with Chris Payne and Brian Miller are narcotics certified, which brings a valuable asset to the Patrol Division and how we do business in Santa Barbara. So that was just kind of a spotlight I wanted to bring up. Response times, the calls for service, the chief had mentioned that, and what we use that for is how are we serving the customers in the Patrol Division? In other words, you know, we talked about staffing levels, and we have, and I've set minimum staffing guidelines for our, my watch commanders, to make sure that we have adequate staffing to respond to the priority ones through four calls for service. And as you saw, that the priority ones have steadily gone down, that's just a subset of being able to get the officers there in a timely fashion. So the priority ones and twos, and I won't go over those again, but we're doing really well in our, in response times, we think is customer service and how we deliver that to the citizens of the city. We've, the staffing update, we've been through, and the deputy chief went over what our operational strength is, what our functional strength is. And I'll just touch a little bit on the fluctuation with what our operational strength and functional strength, in what our functional strength is. In terms of, and to answer Councilman Hotchkiss's question on, you know, where are they, a lot of those deal with medical issues which are HIPAA-protected. So it's a moving target, back and forth, and it's gone as low for me in the past two years as having four officers out, now to fifteen, the other two are within other divisions. And I suspect that's going to go down, as the deputy chief alluded to, that we do have some injuries that, when I work with risk management, and I meet with risk management every week for an update as to where those injuries are, we expect to get some of those back to work. So I expect that we've hit the apex of that. We're going to be trending downward.
Say it again, please.
I believe that with our IODs, and we call them injury on duties, but we have that category as also injury on duty in others. So if we have somebody, say, on military leave or family medical leave, they all go into the mix of that, and that brings our functional strength down. So I do expect some of those injuries through medical procedures and other reasons, they're going to be coming back. So that's my prediction.
Well, but no, we can't put a time on this.
I don't want to put a timeline on it, because, you know, it's such a moving target. So if I was to-
And the reason I'm asking is, obviously, it helps us know how much we should over-hire, as it does you, too.
You know, in the next couple of months, I expect we're going to get at least four of them back.
Four of them back.
Yeah, I would predict four of them back. I put, as a bullet point up there, Milpas Action Task Force and Casa Esperanza, and I think that's important, because if we look back on the past year as to the strides forward that Milpas Action Task Force and the Milpas Corridor has made, it's important. Milpas Action Task Force meetings continue monthly. In the past year, they have been extremely productive with the collaborative effort with Casa Esperanza and MATF. They've improved the quality of life in the area in the Milpas Corridor. As many of you know, Casa Esperanza, last July, went to a sober-only facility. What that did is that focused efforts on what, in restorative policing, we believe, helped those who are homeless make good choices. In collaboration with restorative policing, they've assisted in making those choices. And recently, Casa Esperanza has a new executive director, it's Bob Bogle. He's brought new leadership, and we're looking forward to the partnership with him and expanding the Milpas area improvement even farther beyond the efforts we've made so far. On restorative policing, I'm going to talk to you first about some recent issues that we've experienced, and the chief alluded to that, in the six-hundred block of State Street. The chief gave some statistics of enforcement. However, there are some other responses that we've had, and I'll just go over those, of our young urban travelers who, as we primarily focused on the six-hundred block of State Street, that was a larger effort. It was focused in the six-hundred block of State Street, but that expanded into the downtown corridor. And in response to that, the criminal nuisance issues, we increased officer presence specifically in the downtown area. We involved our beat coordinators, direct and foot patrol in the downtown corridor, our criminal impact team, which typically works at nights. We utilized them from the hours of eighteen-hundred to twenty-hundred hours to continue the aggressive enforcement posture downtown during that month-long that we conducted that operation. Upgrades to the city lot ten, we had upgrades with the burrisway, the planter area, we gained fencing, railing, and signage. And as of today's date, many of the problems have dissipated downtown. We're going to continue to monitor that. The total enforcement efforts, the chief went over, so I won't go over them again. But on the restorative policing up, and where we're going to go from here, Officer Hove and Burley continue our partnerships with the city, the county, and other social service agencies in their efforts to assist our homeless clients to make good choices. On a monthly average, our restorative policing team conducts about one hundred and ten follow-up visits to clients. They make six new placements of clients in new facilities every month. They conduct four intervention bases based on calls from service from other officers. They make one to two reunifications from families, and that's a difficult thing to do. So when, in a month's time, when you take a client and you get them re-unified with the family, that is a true success. And they conduct about one hundred and ten special projects per month, where, and what that is, is that's when a subject is currently in some sort of placement with reunification or sobriety or otherwise within a restorative policing program. That's a lot of activity that our restorative policing program outreaches to our homeless population. One thing that's not up there that I'm just going to touch on briefly is our traffic safety, because traffic issues in the city are, we have issues with traffic. And the city averages about one thousand five hundred and fifty reported traffic collisions per year, which about a third involve an injury, and about nine percent are DUI-related. Our Police Department has a robust traffic safety program involving a collaboration with our personnel, Public Works, their engineering section, as well as education programs in forms of DUI checkpoints, distracted driver campaigns, and working with other agencies as we participate with the Avoid the Twelve program. Our efforts are also supplemented with, and the deputy chief alluded to this, is we have about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars' worth of traffic safety grants per year. Currently, we have three separate grants. They include saturation patrols, responsible beverage service, DUI checkpoints, and their training for alcohol establishments, all in an effort to reduce our drinking, driving in the city. So in the traffic and the other programs, what we're looking forward to in the upcoming year is to make Santa Barbara a safer place to live, to work, and to visit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Captain Widdam, back to restorative policing for a moment. Tell, how do the yellow-jacketed, the community liaisons work with the restorative policing in terms of multiplying or helping their functionality?
And Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Rouse, you may have seen, I'm sure everybody has seen what we call the yellow shirts. They work with the restorative policing. We also have blue shirts. The blue shirts are administrative wing that assist Officer Hove and Burley in their administrative duties to take caseloads and manage the caseloads. Our yellow shirts are the outreach workers on the street that go into, and they contact businesses. They're, where they're needed, where they go in the Milpas Corridor, they're downtown. Currently, we have five yellow shirts. We utilize them in an effort to kind of be the eyes and ears of the Police Department in restorative policing to some degree, but also to take the complaints of the business owners as to what the issues are, so they can report them back, not only to the Police Department, but to restorative officers. So their mission has changed in the past couple of months, to where as they're more participative in contacting homeless persons, they're also, the measurements that we have for them in terms of the businesses, I get a weekly report from them as to the businesses they actually contact. So we're keeping a tally on their activity.
Well, tell me, I'm sorry, tell me about the blue shirts again. Are they, are they non-sworn personnel?
Correct. The program has, is overseen by Sergeant Holkey. He's our tactical patrol force sergeant. The, we have two officers assigned, it's Officer Burley and Officer Hove. And then as an assistance to them to, for the administrative duties that they have, to keep caseloads and, you know, what persons are within this program and that program, we have authorized three blue shirts, which are the administrative assistants. However, one of those positions is vacant. We had one of the gentlemen who was a blue shirt take another job in the city. So they assist in the administrative duties, they outreach to the clients as well, and they put caseloads together. But there are some things that the officers, because they're sworn, are the ones that are doing the enforcement arm of the restorative policing that the blue shirts just can't. Thank you.
If I could add to that, the blue shirts came to us from other nonprofits with many years of experience with mentally ill individuals. So they're not just administrative assistants. They truly are more trained than the yellow shirts, because they've worked in facilities prior to coming to us with at least fifteen, twenty years of working with this community. That's why they've become such a great assistance to our officers, because they either know these folks from other places, and they have connections, whether it's in Los Angeles, Santa Monica, or further, or north of us, to take some of these folks, especially our veterans. Right now, currently, our homeless community that are veterans is seventeen percent from this war that we're in, that young of an age that are out there. That's a lot of people. And what we've done with the courts, as I've mentioned before, we do have a veterans court, where the judges are being very, very helpful to these folks. And the blue shirts are the individuals who really dive into this in terms of connecting them with services, because they are the more experienced of the other non-sworn people that we have. So they play a key role.
Mr. Hart?
Well, I just, I think the restorative policing effort is really very successful and a great effort. I think everybody recognizes that. The chief mentioned that in the first month of the increased effort in the six-hundred block of State Street, tremendous, you know, progress, the nearly six-hundred misdemeanor citations, eighteen felony arrests, almost fifty misdemeanor arrests. Do you have any more current information, you know, maybe basically from April to May? You know, can you tell us the trend even, just to get a sense of what's happening?
The next, the next set of numbers you'll get is on June 3rd, where we're going to, we're bringing together all the weeks that we've done. So when I give my department update on June 3rd, you'll have it from the inception of this program to the date that I give my presentation to you.
Okay.
But it has not changed.
Just a sense. And I understand the effort is there, but I would assume that, you know, folks are getting the message, and that there's less citations occurring as time has gone on. Is that an inaccurate perception?
No, it's accurate. They are going down. A lot of folks that we would see continuously, even those that receive citations, they've found their way out of, off the corridor. Because of the aggressive stance that we've taken.
Right, and that's exactly the point of doing it. So thank you for that. Can you give me kind of a sense, order of magnitude, you know, from March to April, six-hundred? Are we talking April to May, half that, a quarter of that? You know, just kind of the order of magnitude drop-off because of people getting the message?
I spoke to Sergeant Holkey, they probably have.
Okay, thanks. That's what I was looking for.
Just to be clear, the issues on six-hundred block of State Street's not necessarily connected, could be somewhat to the restorative policing program. I mean, there are different types of people, you know, having, conducting different types of behavior. So the numbers of felony arrests or other infractions and so forth that our restorative policing team can do, it's not necessarily addressing the other issues that you were talking about earlier with the six-hundred block of State Street. They're two different populations we're talking about.
That's correct, Madam Mayor, but we're addressing that aggressively.
Yeah.
And whether it's a restorative policing issue or not, if it's at the six-hundred block of State Street, we're going to address it aggressively. And many times, it is the restorative policing community that we address with the restorative policing officers. Sometimes, it's my narcotic officers that see the same community committing narcotics infractions, and they handle that. So we've spread the workload around, and we've just decided to just address it as a department and not necessarily a special team, but we are compiling the numbers that I'll give you on June 3rd.
Great, thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The yellow shirts then have, one of their roles is that they are the eyes and ears of the department. I was hearing that. Do they also, if they see something bad going on, do they report that into the department, and then there's a follow-up made? Is that a customary process there?
Madam Mayor, yes, I mean, they're eyes and ears of the Police Department. They're an extension of the Police Department, although they're part of restorative policing. They're kind of like hosts, you know, they're the ambassadors of the Police Department that are downtown, and certainly, if they see some type of criminal activity or deviant behavior, they do report that.
Do we keep track of that slice of the activity?
I'm not sure if we keep track. We don't keep track of, you know, if they make a 911 call to them, but we keep track of, you know, their primary mission, which are the business contacts and the contacts with any of the homeless community that they encounter, that they refer to the restorative policing officers.
Well, it would certainly interest me to hear what, if you could follow that a bit over time, to just to, when I was supportive of this program, that was one of the pieces of it that seemed like a real opportunity, is that they would be, have that capacity. So I, for one, would be interested in having you follow that and report how you, just what results there are, how many cases they're reporting in in the future, Madam Mayor.
They certainly have communication with the Police Department while they're out doing their rounds.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How much of their function is educational? If they see somebody new, I don't think they say, "Welcome to Santa Barbara, anything goes." Do they say, you know, "This is Santa Barbara, you can't lie down on the sidewalk, you can't sit on the sidewalk, you can't be an aggressive panhandler, you can't do a number of other things," that I think Casey Bute told, talked about one time when she met some people getting off the bus? In other words, do they set out some parameters so that people know we've got an eye on them and they should behave civilly to everybody here in town?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hotchkiss, when you say "they," are you referring to the yellow shirts?
Yes.
Sort of, with the yellow shirts, their primary function is not to engage and do enforcement activity, but-
Well, I'm not sure that's enforcement activity, that's information activity.
They don't generally tell people what they can and can't do. No, that's not what their function is. So they're there to contact the businesses, they are there to report the activity, but as for taking proactive activity, what I don't want is my yellow shirts getting into, because they're not equipped to, issues of, you know, getting into it with a citizen, with the, you know, the type of young urban traveler, the ones that would do those things that you're discussing. I would expect them to report it, so they can be responded to.
And how about the blue shirts?
Well, the blue shirts primarily are out in the field. They're in, when they're assisting, they have caseloads that they assist the restorative policing officers with. So they're not typically out in the field. They'll make contacts with clients, but those are the one-on-one engagements. They're not the ones that are out walking the streets.
So if we took another view of this and called it educational, could they participate, the yellow shirts?
If we were to redirect their mission, yeah, we could. But then I would caution that I wouldn't want them to get involved in altercations with some of the populations that we're talking about.
No, I wouldn't either. But it is informational, and it can be helpful to them as well as to our population. We can discuss that more.
Sure.
Mr. Hart?
One of the challenges that I've heard about in the downtown State Street corridor is the inability of a police officer to necessarily cite somebody without a citizen's complaint if they were not, if the officer didn't witness a particular activity. Can the yellow shirts fill out citizens' complaints in that respect? And do they do that? complaints in that respect? And do they do that?
Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Hart, absolutely. And what you're referring to is a misdemeanor that's not committed in the officer's presence. And when that occurs, the officer can't cite them unless that person's a juvenile. So as eyes and ears, if they do see activity, they certainly can be that citizen complainant for a citation or an arrest.
Okay. Now, that would be something, as fallen up on what Councilmember White asked about, about some more additional information about that level of activity. I'd like to know that, too, whether, how that is trending over time, if that is something that's become an increasing part of their job, or has stayed relatively constant throughout the term of the program.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the past, I've asked whether that program is, you feel like that program could be expanded or not. In your sense, as I recall, in past years, was your hands are full and that this was a full complement of that activity. Do you feel that today? Or is there still more, is there any change in view on whether that could be expanded at this point? Or I hear you have one position open, and that, of course...
Mayor and Councilmember White. You know, we are effective to the degree that the rest of the system can participate and involve itself. We have two officers. We have nine civilians. But the capacity of the criminal justice system is, I think, what the issue is. And we have restorative court. We have a lot of social service agencies in the city, and we utilize them. We utilize not only them, our local ones, but we utilize the ones that are out of county as well through contacts and just good relationships that the officers make. So at this time, I would say that we are probably where we should be. And, you know, as we reassess on a continual basis the success of the program, and it's extremely successful, there may be a time where we may want to look at expanding the program.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A minute ago, you were answering Councilmember Hart's question about yellow shirts acting as citizen complaint, and you said unless it's a juvenile. So did you mean the suspect was a juvenile, or the complaining party? What did you mean by that?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Murillo, in the law of misdemeanor arrests, misdemeanor citations, for an adult subject, a suspect, that violation has to be committed in officer's presence for us to take action to cite or to arrest. That's not the case with a juvenile. A juvenile subject and officer can take action independent of having that citizen witness that citizen's complaint. It's just a fact, a matter of the law.
Thank you. Okay, that's that round of questions. So please continue.
That was my presentation.
Okay. So we're up to Captain Torres. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Gil Torres. I'm the captain of Administrative Services Division. Pretty much, I handle everything that's non-patrol or investigative. It's a pretty big division, IT records, animal control, pretty much everything else. I'm going to highlight on a few of the bigger areas, things that we're working on right now. One of them is our security gates. I know you're familiar with it. This is part of a grant that we received from Department of Homeland Security, the county OES, the Homeland Security Department, which allotted us $215,000 to help secure the police facility, which, when it was built years ago, it was never done. And I know we were waiting on that for a while, depending on the new facility we're looking at. When redevelopment went away, then we went back to trying to harden our facility. So we've been working closely with Public Works on that, on design, and it's going through the permit process now, anticipating construction to take place at the end of the year, November, with completion in February of the gate. At the same time, we're also looking at kind of the overall police facility, just improving security there. That's another area where we kind of put on the back burner because we're anticipating a new facility. And we've identified areas of vulnerability for us security-wise. So we're working closely with facilities maintenance and Jim Dooley and his crew to kind of help tighten that up. The area of hiring recruitment, very active with that. Pretty much, we work closely with Human Resources, and we're on a six-month recruitment rotation on that because it kind of goes along with the academy, which academies are usually run in April and October. So we start the recruitment, as soon as the academy starts, we're already working on the next one because it takes quite a while. By the time you do a written test, physical agility, oral interviews, the background process takes months. So it's pretty labor intensive. It takes a lot of time. We've been averaging, we've noticed the last few years, our numbers have been coming in lower. This last test we just did a couple, like maybe a month ago, we had 170 candidates take the exam. And we'll probably look at interviewing probably about 100, and usually probably put about 20% in background. Our target coming up, we anticipate, part of our process we do is, that's why we use the over hires, we kind of anticipate retirements, people going to different departments. We got notice today, somebody's going to Bay Area Department, he's laterally transferring. About six weeks ago, we lost somebody to UC Santa Barbara Police Department. We have another employee in background for Northern California Agency. So, you know, we kind of try to look at our roster and see who we're going to leave. So we're just kind of anticipating how many openings. So I'm looking at six to eight by December replacing. An example, what happened last class, we were trying to hire four. I was only able to get one person out of the whole process of, we had 216 people take the exam. By the time everything kind of washed out, one person made it through. So we have one in the academy, and we actually put another person in the academy, which was from the last list. It was a female recruit that was a Marine Reserve, and she was deployed before we were able to send her. But she got released, so she's going with our one other cadet. So we have two in the academy right now. But what we're seeing is a lot of, as other agencies around the state are hiring, it's getting really competitive for us. And we're competing with, you know, big pulls, you know, Oxnard, Ventura County. We lost a person that went all the way to the chief's interview. She chose Irvine Police Department over us for various reasons. Some of it's salary, cost of housing, and some of it's just closer to where they are from. So there's various reasons.
Each cycle, so you said about 170 applicants that took the exam to get one or four? I mean, so then the next cycle, are the number of applicants all, let me rephrase this. Do people tend to reapply over time? Or do you say, once you've been through the process once, why bother until a few years go by? Or, you know, do you get a lot of repeat applicants?
It depends where they dropped in the process. If there was a written test, we encourage them to come back because someone had a bad day. Oral interview, same thing. But if we've put them into background already, and we dropped them for an integrity issue or something, we don't really...
Don't bother.
It's not going to bother unless maybe they come back five years later where they've showed us they've turned things around, and we're open to that. You know, show us what you've done in those, you know, five years. So we do it that way.
Okay. Because it's a huge applicant pool that you're choosing from. And it's a good thing that you're very selective in who you eventually hire. So that's really what's going on.
It's big, but some of these people, like they're concurrently going with other agencies. See, we're finding that. And I'm trying to rush our portion to get it through quicker because we're competing against other good departments, you know. So it's selling Santa Barbara, but that doesn't always work, you know. But we do our best to get the best quality candidate we can. So we're not settling for lower standards. We keep our standards high. If we have to send one person through, we just send one person through. But that's the good thing about this over hiring, because even though I was only able to really hire one person, we're still too over hired based on that buffer that we had. So I always try to hire as many of the best qualified people. I might get a little bit more to over hire because the next time we test, it will catch up. So that's where it works really well.
Mr. Hart?
When you talk to your colleagues around the state, are you hearing that this is a problem statewide in terms of recruitment? Or is this something localized that we're struggling with? Or is it coming out of the recession, everybody, you know, local government around the state is staffing up and adding officers, so there's just more competition? Can you give more insight into that?
The competition is with people who have capacity backgrounds. Because, you know, there's a lot of areas, people, you know, with social media, people are posting things on, you know. I know we used to, we don't use it, the law changed, but before, you know, agencies were finding out things through social media, through, just the culture's kind of changed a little bit. People are doing, you know, getting involved with drugs and other things. I mean, there's a whole number of factors where people are just having a problem getting through backgrounds for us. And that seems to be more of the issue than the numbers. For Santa Barbara, we're seeing the numbers. But here's an example. Oxnard, they were trying to hire, I believe, 20 people because they got that much, you know, as far as attrition. They were able to get 12. They couldn't hire enough people. In fact, they were competing with them directly. So, and this is the same issues where they have people that are having a hard time getting through background investigations. Because like I said, I had, I mean, we had 187. You think we can get somebody out of there, but, you know, they just couldn't get through backgrounds. So, and not much, we can't help them much on that. It's just, they're pretty black and white. It's risk management for us. If we see somebody that's going to be a problem, you know, it could cost us, you know, quite a bit on the other end if we don't hire the best people up front.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that. Thanks.
Okay. Also, we're working with the hiring. Another area that's difficult is with dispatchers. I know that's one area where we're down. We have a lot of vacancies. I believe we're at eight right now. And when you have 18 dispatchers, eight's quite a bit. We're backfilling it with overtime. We're using officers down there, some officers on overtime. And we're working closely with HR on recruitment effort. We just hired three. We're looking at lateral dispatchers, which we have in the past, that worked other agencies that want to move to Santa Barbara. Again, it's, there's no academy for dispatcher, so the training is in dispatch. There's a big learning curve in there. It takes six months to a year to learn the job. And we're hopefully, with the nicer, newer facility that I'll talk about next, that'll help, you know, keep people, attract, retain people. Because compared to where they're at now, it's really, it's a big improvement for where they're at now. So hopefully, that'll, you know, work. And we're also going to be working with an outside consultant to kind of look at our internal operations on things that we can do to better, you know, retain our employees and our training of them. Moving on to the 911 center relocation, that's been an ongoing project. I still be working closely with Public Works. Walked over there today. And the framing, the metal framing's there, it's moving along pretty well. Looks like probably next step is going to be a lot of the wiring that's going to go in there. And we're anticipating, hopefully, moving in sometime in the end of August of, you know, this year. One thing I'm not sure if everybody realizes, but besides the 911 center, we're also going to be moving pretty much the entire, our entire computer server room for the police department's going over there, too. Because, you know, the brains of the departments, I mean, as far as technologicals go in there, because the same vulnerability that the building has for the 911 center, we want to, you know, structurally, as far as earthquake, we need to move it someplace that's a little bit more structurally sound. And like, because we could set up shop anywhere with tents, but we still need that, we need that technological functioning center. So that's all moving also. So there's a lot of work behind it. But our IT people, you know, together with Public Works and the outside contractors, they're doing a pretty good job moving it forward. That's all I have. Are you any questions?
I think we've been asking as they've gone along. So thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Great. Captain Altavilla. And then we'll go to public comment.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Alex Altavilla. I am the Investigative Division Commander at the Police Department. The mission of the Investigative Division is to investigate or resolve all active assigned criminal cases, including high-tech crimes, to a successful conclusion or until all leads are exhausted. In my division, it's basically made up of four different teams or units. One is the Crimes Against Persons Team, which also is a subset of that, has the Crime Lab. I also have the Crimes Against Property, the Youth Services Section, which handles the gang investigation. It also has one School Resource Officer. And then also the Narcotics Unit. And as the deputy chief alluded to, I have one detective that is assigned to the Sabernet Task Force. In regards to the Crimes Against Persons, one of the things that we continue to see, and that we've changed on our P3, is that we've broken out the analysis of evidence in general, and we've broken out the electronic evidence. We continue to go ahead and see an increase in the use of smartphones and the data we can go ahead and extract from them, whether it be Facebook, Snapchat, Instagram. Our offenders continue to go ahead and, you know, communicate in a variety of different social medias. What we've done also is to expand our ability to go ahead and conduct analysis on those phones with the purchase of a system that has allowed us to go ahead and download four phones simultaneously at the same time. And each one of those iPhones has a tremendous amount of data on it that we use during our investigations. The Crimes Against Property has been very busy. We go ahead and use a variety of different strategies to go ahead and combat property crimes, one being obviously the initial point, which is public awareness, you know, to go ahead and keep things locked up and out of view of some of the offenders. The other is, throughout the Bureau, I have a very aggressive caseload posture. We have our Criminal Impact Team, who continues to work with going out and doing probation searches on offenders, and specifically assists with our AB 109 response, the early release response, along with the response teams that we have, which is a collaboration between us, probation, and the Sheriff's Department. Actually, we've seen a decrease in burglaries in every category so far, which is really, really good news, residential, commercial, and auto. I can't tell you exactly what strategy's been effective, or if you just got the right people in custody, but it seems to be working at this particular point in time. Also, at the chief's direction, I was able to sit down with the sheriff, the district attorney, and Governor Brown, and talk about AB 109 and some of our specific concerns about how the program has rolled out and some of the challenges that we have. So he sat there and really listened to all of it, and I was very candid about my thoughts. The Youth Services Section, what we continue to see is our gang investigations have been multi-jurisdictional. Typically, we would have a gang investigation that might be isolated to Santa Barbara. But now, we've basically had to have a collaborative response between the Sheriff's Department, sometimes the custody people, Lompoc and Santa Maria, and even the Department of Corrections. So we see that gang crimes that occur in Santa Barbara have tentacles that kind of branch out into other jurisdictions and even into the prison system. And we've actually had some really good successes in that during those collaborations with all those other agencies. And then our Narcotics Unit, they continue to be very busy with a lot of heroin, cocaine, and specifically methamphetamine cases. That is something we've seen an increase on, methamphetamine wise. Basically, it's a relatively simple thing to make. They can pretty much set up shop wherever they want to. And we've seen an increase in methamphetamine, which typically, from an economic standpoint, drives the cost down. And we've seen our seizures in those increase. In the last couple of months, we've had actually two separate 10-pound seizures that Sabernet has done in the county. So that's of concern, and we're continuing to go ahead and investigate very aggressively the methamphetamine cases that we see come in. And that rounds it out for the Investigative Division, unless you have any specific questions.
Before we get a question, something that is not up there is our Major Investigation Team. We've mentioned this, over the last few months, Alex has taken different detectives from each of those teams there to put a group together to work our cold cases, specifically our cold cases that are homicides that go back quite a few years. So this team works very diligently. On top of their normal duties, they belong to the Major Investigation Team that works with the FBI and other governments around the world, and other states in our country, to solve some of these cold cases, most of them murders. So that continues. Over the years, the 15 years that I've been here, we've been able to solve quite a few. We have some others that are close. We have some others that are close. And quite frankly, what we get often are, you know, even after the homicide occurred 30 years ago, 25 years ago, the families of those victims of the homicides still contact us to find out if we've forgotten or stopped. And the good news is that we haven't stopped and we haven't forgotten. And it takes a lot of work. So we don't have a specific team that does it. Alex has been able to take people from each of these teams to put this team together that meet all the time, they work together. And we go all over the country to interview folks that we think might be involved. We've certainly involved the FBI in several of these cases to try to bring some people to justice, but more importantly, to bring some closure to the families of those that were murdered in our city over the last 30, 40 years. And we have solved some over the years. And this team that Alex put together so eloquently has really been successful and we continue to move in that area.
Okay. Mr. Hart?
Well, I have to ask Captain Altavilla what his candid thoughts were about AB 109 that he shared with the governor. I just, you set me up.
Well, it's, you know, I tried, there were a variety of different, you know, statistics that were thrown out. I tried to go ahead and add some flesh to the topic, so to speak. Specifically, you know, when the offenders are pushed down into the, our jail system, I basically told him that I, he put the sheriff kind of in a, in a challenging spot. They're at capacity now and there used to be the ability for us to go ahead and, you know, make a decision between a good alternative and a bad alternative as far as somebody to release. Now basically, we've put the sheriff in a position where he's making a decision on two equally bad alternatives on who to release. That's one issue because I think that as a, as a county, we were behind the curve staffing wise out there and also we were right at our cap. The other one that concerns me from a public safety perspective and from a safety of our officers is the flash incarcerations, which they go in for a very short period of time, sometimes five or 10 days. But when they're back out, a lot of times we have to go and arrest them again. There's obviously an element of, we're seeing more of them flee. I don't know if it's a result of our aggressive strategy in going out and doing compliance checks, but as a result of that, we do have information where when they are arrested, they're only going to be in for a short period of time, they are continuing to go ahead and bring, you know, drugs and weapons into the, into the jail facility. So I tried to go ahead and, you know, be candid about some of the things that we're actually seeing at the, the line level and specifically with Santa Barbara City and Santa Barbara County to make sure that he had kind of a good flavor on, you know, what this public policy's kind of, the challenges we have here in Santa Barbara.
Well, it's really important and it's, it's, I think it's impressive the governor's reaching out and asking these kind of questions. I hope he's hearing that. So can you explain more about the flash? What did you, what was the term?
I think they call them flash incarcerations and some, some, some chances probation will go ahead and issue a warrant or they want somebody picked up. And then they actually go in for a relatively short period of time.
10 days.
Yeah, I think it is 10 days.
So this is somebody who's convicted of a crime, who's serving a short sentence? Or this is somebody who's been out on probation, who's getting picked up again and put back in jail, but there's no room in the jail, so they're not staying very long? Is that, is that what?
That's part of the function, yeah. They, they've actually on probation and they're just basically going in for a, you know, they know there's going to be a short period of time of just incarceration.
I see.
So there's a, there's an element of, you know, us going out and at least picking them up and putting them back. And in, in a lot of challenges we have too, from an AB 109 perspective is with these compliance teams. I think a really good collaboration between probation, the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department is that in some cases, there's, I don't have an exact percentage, but some of them are homeless. So when, when we go out and actually do these compliance checks, it takes a period of time to go ahead and track them down versus going and doing, doing searches. And we find that we end up, due to that population, going back and doing compliance checks at residents, you know, frequently. But then, quite frankly, sir, it keeps them on their toes and they comply with the probation terms.
Could you even begin to estimate, you know, this is a new workload for the department. Could you even begin to estimate how, what, you know, what that means in terms of resources that are being devoted to this that you didn't, didn't used to do?
Well, we went ahead and established a Criminal Impact Team several years ago and it wasn't a, we basically just shiffred resources. We felt that it was better to have a sergeant and four officers go out and, you know, work with probation, work with these compliance teams. We do have a, a small grant that probation goes ahead and uses for overtime to basically, you know, stay on the offense and make sure these people are at least complying with their probation terms, which is what we want to have happen. We want to go ahead and rehabilitate those people and have them go move on to, you know, good lives in the community. But also it, it allows us to go ahead and know who the players are and at least for a short period of time, try to keep them in custody if we can. But it's, it's, it's definitely a challenge.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of public comment speakers and we'll start with Jan Marco Von Yert with accompaniment by Randy Rouse. Just kidding. Excuse me. It would be followed by, is Gene McKnight still here? No, I don't see him. And if anyone else needed to do, you need to fill out a slip and I need to get that from you. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Dear Madam Mayor, dear City Council members, thank you for your time. My name is Jan Marco Von Yert and I first wanted to thank you for all your hard work and efforts to make this budget conservative and responsible. And I also wanted to thank the Police Department for their hard work the past couple months. I'm here to speak on behalf of many business owners and property owners from State Street. And although we talked about the 600 block, it's a problem more than the 600 block. State Street has been in this array for quite a while and it's a reflection of our town. And I feel very irresponsible. I have three small children, my wife won't even let us to go downtown because of the issues. And it's not only, not very clean, it smells terrible. There's the urban travelers and they have no respect, not from the Police Department, not from any adults and probably not even from themselves. And the problem I'm seeing is if we react after the fact, we're always a step behind. I would like that you make a serious thought about increasing foot patrol on State Street through police officers. And this is an ominous from all the business owners, all the way up to 1300 block. And I know that the Chief is doing his best, but honestly, we need people present, we need people on foot designated for State Street. This is the reflection of our town, it's the engine of our town, it's where the revenues come in. And if we don't pay attention to that, I think we will be hurt in the long terms. And any efforts made in that financially, I think will be paid back exponential as when we have cruise ships come in and the first thing they see is our disarray, they are probably not very inclined to come back, refer our town or spend any money. And the same is with tourists who want to buy properties in Santa Barbara or consider our town to be their next home. So I urge you really to consider that. Although we, I also consider that you do very responsible work with the budget and nobody wants to increase anything, but I think it will be well worth invested.
Thank you.
I hope I didn't go over my minute.
You did, but that's okay.
And that Gene unfortunately had to go to a meeting, but, and many people couldn't come.
Gene McKnight, I know, had the similar comments.
Correct. And there's many other people, I think they wrote you some emails.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Art Stevens?
I want to first apologize for my attire. It's very hot out and it's too hot to wear a clergy collar when you walk instead of using wheels. First, I, I want to congratulate the Police Department on the fact that they've been able to reduce the level of crime without a gang injunction. I also want to say that I really respect them for doing the jobs they do. I would be very scared and loath to be a police officer, just as I would a fire department officer. I do want to address an issue though, that I've addressed before here, and that is the level of tension that I see all the time between police and Latino adults, but especially There's a sense with the youth I talk to of they're out to get me. And whether that's true or not, it is a perception that's very common out there and there's a lot of fear of the police. I've seen it arise from what kids call cop stops. They feel the police are looking at them all the time and questioning their behavior, perhaps not necess, perhaps more than, than is, is appropriate. I just want to tell one example from my own experience with a, with a neighbor's kid. This kid was a really good kid, he wasn't doing anything wrong, very responsible. And I talked to him just before I moved out of the neighborhood I was in before and I said, "How are you doing? And what do you want to do when you grow up?" And he said, "I did want to be a policeman, but I stopped wanting to because I wouldn't have any friends." And so I just have a general question is, there is this, this level of fear out there and anger, what new strategies might the police adopt to do something that creates a different atmosphere?
Any other public comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment. Any other questions from council? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Just a quick question. Chief, when we go through the budget in early June, can we talk about the, what several people have asked for, which is dedicating police officers to State Street? We don't have to go into that now.
We'll talk about it, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Well, I, I'm pondering the question of staffing and I know that one of the items that we're considering in terms of increasing the police budget is adding an officer. So I'm wondering if we, if you have a good response time, if violent crime is down from last year, property crime is down and gang crime is down, are, maybe we are at the right staffing level if everything is, is functioning correctly? I know there's some concerns about State Street and the nomadic street people. What would be your response, or Chief, or Deputy Chief, Mannix?
My, my response would be that another police officer position would allow us to enhance what we're already doing. I think that the best time to enhance it is when it's looking good, to keep it at that level. And I think that our community, our business community as well, I think deserve that. In terms of permanently putting someone, let's say, on State Street, it would be hard to promise that if we had another officer or two, that I would dedicate them solely to that because of the fact that what I said a few minutes ago is that when we have other priorities, we have to shift people around. So it would be with that caveat that I not promise that that person will be placed there forever and never used for another purpose, when another purpose may come up where they would be, have to be utilized. So I think that in terms of another one officer, I think it would enhance us, it would allow other officers to go back to their regular duties. But I think the time to address the enhancement of one officer is when things are going well. And they are going well for a lot of reasons, not just because we're aggressive. I think with the PAL, with the Parks and Rec, with other, with young people and adults making better decisions with response times. Trust me, when I sit with other chiefs in our county and in the tri-county area, this city is very blessed. But I think that my response would be that another officer, if that would be the case, I believe would enhance the services all around.
Okay, I'll give that consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you very much, we're adjourned.